All right. Call to order a meeting of the regular, the regular school committee meeting of August 19th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, room 227. You can also join via Zoom using the link in the posted meeting agenda. First item of business is approval of the agenda.
Second.
Under discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The matter carries. Next item is public comment. The Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public Schools students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. Do you have any public comment signed up online? None? Any in the room? Item four, approval of the consent agenda. This is the minutes of the school committee meetings of June 17th and July 29th, and warrants from FY 24 and FY 25.
Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The matter carries. Superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I, shall we start?
Yeah, actually, before we get into that, committee, I'd like to ask the committee for a moment of silence. We learned today that a member of the food services staff from Salem High School, Sandra Nikinchuk, passed away recently. And, yeah, so just a moment of silence for Ms. Nikinchuk, who's reportedly, in the message, a person with infectious positive energy, who'll be missed by staff and students alike. So.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and our hearts go out to the family and all the staff who knew her well. I know she was beloved by not just her colleagues, but students at Salem High School. I, here tonight, I can't believe we're talking about back to school. That's why I'm in my suit already and back to school mode here. And we're really excited about the start of school, a little, little later than the last few years in that we're starting after Labor Day. So, a week from Wednesday, Carlton School begins, and then, two weeks from Wednesday, the rest of the district in grades one to 12 begin, and then the following Monday is our pre-K and kindergarten students. So, we're busy at work, and tonight you're going to hear an update about, for back to school. But I, it's not appropriate to talk about back to school until we do a little bit of a, a step back on our outcomes from this past school year. And I want to take a moment just to update the school committee briefly on the strategic plan. We don't have all the data in yet because we're still waiting for some of the end of the year data, the MCAS data and other information to be released publicly. But I can give, I wanted to do this last meeting, but even, but we didn't have everybody there, and we had a long meeting, so I want to make sure that I give that update here tonight. So, Mark, if you could cue up or surely the presentation. So, this is how we're, this'll give us a little bit of closure from the last school year, and then it'll tee up some of the work that we're trying to do for the upcoming school year. Okay. So, again, these are our values, which, again, loom large. I had a chance to speak to our new hires today, and we've reviewed our core values as a district. And I did thought, I did think, I do think it's important to celebrate a lot of the success that we've had, had in the last year. And there's some pictures here of our Student Voice Project. We have pictures of teachers who are working really hard on examining student performance and making adjustments. We have our, obviously, our football team and other, they, not just the football team, but other teams that had success last year, our baseball team as well. And, and then I thought that this video, if Mark, you could cue this up, of our March convocation, which was a celebration of our staff, our students, and parents, who all performed, was a good way to capture the positivity and the, and the good work that happened in the Salem Public Schools last year. Let Mark cue that up. If you remember, we held a March mid-year celebration, and the theme and the focus was making sure we, we embrace the talents of everyone who's associated with the Salem Public Schools. And, there you go. Competitions between schools. All right. So, I mean, I think that speaks to, you know, the energy and enthusiasm and the talents of our staff, our students. We had students perform, or, and, yeah, the talents of our staff in winning child games, yeah, for sure. But we had a parent dancing, we had a custodial group performing, and so, you know, that's the energy and the spirit that I want to take into this upcoming school year as well. And I think captures well, you know, some of the, that was March, that's, tends to be a long month for people, and I just loved everybody coming together in community as a school system. So, as we talk about this, this past school year, it's important to look at our, at our successes and opportunities for improvement through the lens of our priorities and our strategic plan. And as you know, we have four priorities, and each priority has a series of outcomes associated with them. So, on this slide, you can see that, I'm not going to read them to you, but the measures of success that we defined. Again, remember, these are three-year metrics that we're looking at. And predictably, we hit home runs in some areas, some places we made some moderate growth, and in some places we stagnated or, or regressed. And that's what you would expect, although in the end, we hope to make as much progress around all of these as possible. And so, I just want to update the committee where we do have data of where we stand, and there'll be more updates, like I said, in the fall. So, if we look at our most important priority, which is elevating learning, we do not have the MCAS scores yet, but we do have our STAR end-of-the-year assessment data, which is often, well, historically has been a proxy for our performance on the, on MCAS. And we did see some improvement in student growth, where our goal is 60. We improved from 47 to 51, so we're, you know, on, we made improvement in student growth, although the real data point will be when we see the MCAS data and look at whether our growth has improved. The baseline of 47 was based on MCAS data, and the 51 actual is based on STAR data, so it's not quite apples to apples. Our proficiency rates, our three-year goal is based on MCAS data, but what I used for this is because we had STAR data. We did see improvements in English Language Arts, in math, not where we want to be, but we saw strong improvements in grade, or we saw improvements, I wouldn't say strong, but we saw improvement in grades three to eight, in both ELA in math, or projected, because these are projected outcomes on MCAS. In grade 10, which is the high school data, we, we don't think the STAR is a good proxy for MCAS, so that's why it says TBD. I just didn't feel comfortable using that as a, and not every 10th grader took the STAR assessment, and it just has not held to be as predictive as grades three to eight. We do think grades three to eight is more predictive. Our baseline, our, our access performance, we don't have data yet for access. We will have that in the next month when all the state data is released, so that's why it says TBD, so I can't, I couldn't rate access, which, for those that, that's how we assess proficiency, or improvement in proficiency for multilingual learners. We have in the district 752 multilingual learners, which is a significant, I think it's a 50 student increase even from last year. And it, this is an important data point to see how much we're supporting the English language development of our ML students. Percent of students enrolled and passing advanced coursework, the good news is we saw, we think this is the data point, and Mark's team at IT can give me a good sense of where we're going to be. Our goal, our three-year goal was 61%. We think that we hit 61% of all 11th and 12th graders enrolled in advanced coursework, which is AP courses, early college, and courses that, courses that have a trajectory to higher education. So, those, we, we think that the number will be 61% of all 11th and 12th graders are enrolled in advanced course, were enrolled, not, not just enrolled, enrolled and passed in advanced course. Just want to be clear, that even though it says percent enrolled, they have to have enrolled and passed the course. So, we've, we're up to, you know, from just over 50 to 61, which was our goal, so that, we're encouraged by that. Our graduation rates, our goal, our three-year goal is 88%. This is across all high schools. We, we had a, a nice bump from just under 76% to the actual, which is not this past school year. It, it lags one year because we, you can graduate students all the way up to October 1st, so we're one year behind. So, that 80.6 is from the 23, 20, no, 22, 23 school year. We do believe that our 24, 25 numbers are going to be even higher than 80%, just based on our preliminary, you know, you saw the number of graduates from New Liberty, which was exciting. But remember, the graduation rate is a four-year graduation rate, not, there are some kids that graduate in five years, and the state does look at that. But what we use as the, sort of the measuring stick is, what percentage of students do we graduate in four years? So, I'm not, we're not, we don't feel like we've arrived at 80.6. We want to get to 88% minimum by the end of three, three years. But I've coded it green because we've made substantial progress in that area. Parents reporting confidence in schools. Do not have that data yet because our survey has, is closing now on Panorama, and I'll promise you that'll report back on that. We don't really have data yet. This is the first year we've done the parent survey, so all of this will be new, but I will, we will be sharing with Laura's help, the results from the parent survey. Laura, how many responses do we have from the parent survey?
Close to 300.
Close to 300. So, I, you know, I wish it were a little higher, but that's a good start, and we'll be able to then have annual data on that. Priority two, which is, and I should just say, back to, the, the reason I coded in orange, those big orange splotches there, are the data points that I'm most, I think are the most critical and that I'm most concerned about in each of the priority areas. Obviously, our academic performance is important in priority one. And priority two, which is about empowering our educators, which is the work in retention and supporting our retention of all staff, our retention of, of diverse staff, and just how staff are feeling about their experience in the schools. We feel really good about improvements in our retention rate from, our baseline was pretty low, it's 70.9. It was 79.3% last year, and we do think it's going to be higher for this upcoming school, just even based on the number of new teachers that we have, which are not as many as we've had in the last, at least, three years since I've been in the district, or four years now that I've been in the district. So, we expect that number to even go up, but I'm using the actual data from the 23, 24 school year. The percentage of staff of color, we've talked about this at prior school committee meetings. I coded this green because we are on target to reaching our goals. I'm still, I don't think we should be throwing a party for having 20% teachers of color, but that was a goal we set, and we're well on our way to that. And I, my understanding and talking to Jill is that 18% of our new staff this year are staff of color, which should add, hopefully, to the overall number, but we still have work to do clearly in this area, as do a lot of districts. The last two are areas that I'm concerned. Staff, we saw a little bit of a bump in well-being and belonging on the parts of staff, and this is a question we ask on the annual survey to staff. We saw a little bit of a bump particularly where, around well-being, but, you know, we're, and we're pretty flat with belonging, so we've got some work to do in that area. I, you know, I, I think we're, I coded it yellow because I didn't feel like we had made enough progress in that area. And then finally, the last bar is a place where I think, is where I'm most concerned, is the positive perceptions of the amount and quality of feedback faculty receive. We've gotten, you know, you can see, we did not grow at all. We grew by one percentage point in that area, and that's an area that we're doubling down in this upcoming school year because I don't think staff are getting enough. And it's not just about the amount, but it's also about the quality of the experience that we still have not hit the mark. So, again, I, that's an area in orange because I think that's a place we need to improve as a school system. Around belonging with kids, again, this is a mixed bag of where we are. We have done, I think, an outstanding job, and I would credit all our staff, our school leaders, our student services team, our teachers. Our chronic absentee and dropout rate has really improved over the last few years. And this is no small feat, given everything post-pandemic, and it speaks to kids, you know, being more engaged in school, I think. I'm really proud of the, the chronic rate, which we, again, that's not official, that 20.1, that's our best guess of where it's going to be, based on what we reported to the state. And our dropout rate has dropped from, you know, high of over, you know, at 3.5, we're now down to 2.8. I expect it to be even better. Again, that's a one-year lag because that's from the 22, 23 school year, and the 23, 24 year. You can still re-engage students up until October 1st of this year, so you can still get credit for kids coming back to school, and that can impact your data. But we expect it to be even better a year from now. So, we're on pace there. Percent of students who feel valued, yeah, we, again, I think this, we made a little bit of a bump, but not enough. We're short of our, pretty far short of our 70% goal. Stronger at the elementary school, I think, I, I combined elementary and middle school, not as strong at the high school. Although, I will point out that our participation rates at the high school level are lower than what we want. We have struggled to get the survey to high school students, and that's something we need to improve on. So, I don't know how reliable some of the high school data really is, but obviously some more work to do there. Families reporting that their child's school is a good fit. We don't have data yet on that because the survey is still out there. And then here's where I'm most concerned in this area, is discipline disproportionality. We have, we're going to talk more about this at a, at a meeting this fall, and I know some school committee members have raised this issue around risk ratio of disciplined referrals. You can look at suspensions, you can look at disciplined referrals. We now can code them on our, in our, our internal dashboards where we look at disciplined referrals across schools. What it's telling us here is that students, especially students with disabilities, have hot, much higher referral rates than, than the total, the, the population as a whole, and students of color do also, are more than twice as likely to receive disciplined referrals. I think this is a place we have to pay attention to as a school system. I would challenge all of us, and I know some of you have reached out about this, and I appreciate, I know Member Hoffman, you've reached out to me about this. So, that's why this is red. I think this is work we have to do, and I would ask that, you know, that, I, I hope to have a conver, I want to have a conversation this fall on this very topic, as a school district. And I think we recognize how important it is to focus in that. That's got to be a focus for us.
Will you move?
Sure.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask about the line here, just going back a slide to priority two, where it says, "Increased positive perceptions of the amount and quality of feedback faculty receive." Can you just explain a little bit of that? Like, what, what is that?
Well, so, staff are given a survey on a range of different questions. One of them focuses on the feedback they receive as part of our, my assumption is that most of it comes from their experience with observation and feedback, the evaluation process in the schools. Although it can be, how they interpret is really up to the staff, but the, the individual taking the survey. We think it speaks to, that, that they're not, that the experience with evaluation isn't always meaningful for them, that it's not necessarily growing them as much as we would like. It does vary quite a bit by school. They may feel that it's, I, I don't want to speak for the staff, but it might, in talking to people, it could be that they feel like it's overly punitive, it's not, it's more compliance-driven, just to meet contractual requirements and to meet, you know, and it's not just contractual requirements, it's DESI requirements of being evaluated. So, and I've, we've talked to the STU especially quite a bit about this, and this is, we're going to do, a lot of our training with principals will focus on this this year, and there's a wide, I think, range of experiences that people have with feedback. It could, so, most of it, I, my guess is coming from their evaluator. They also do get non-evaluative feedback from coaches. In some cases, that might feel meaningful and productive. In some cases, it may not feel very productive at all. So, that's where that's, my guess is that's where they're, you know, we don't know, I don't know who, you know, we don't follow up with people necessarily, we just know by school what their experience is with feedback.
Okay. And so, it sounds like there are steps that the administrators are taking in order to, to increase the positive perception. Would you say that that's the case?
Well, I think we're trying to, we're working with our administrators this year to, to help improve the, the quality of that, and we're coaching them on that because we see this as a weakness system-wide.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Member Cornell.
Yeah, I just have a couple of follow-up questions. So, one is, can, can the district give teachers a follow-up to distinguish between feedback that they feel like they're getting from school leaders versus coaches?
Ellen, is that possible that we can distinguish the feedback they're getting from coaches? Not in the current survey, but could we ask it differently? Potentially, but the way it's asked now is, we can't disaggregate that.
Right. So, what I'm asking is if we can do a follow-up survey?
Yep.
Because you're, you're, if you're, this is a problem, and so if you're attacking the problem based, you're attacking a problem based on an assumption that the school leaders are the ones who are less prepared to evaluate, or maybe not as effective as they need to be, rather than coaches, but you really don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would, we could do that internally, use an internal survey to do it, yeah.
Right.
Yep. I think that's a good question, a good suggestion.
I also am curious, is there a standard evaluation system that all school leaders use?
There's a standard rubric that we, we use across the state that is meant to drive the type, the feedback that staff receive. The process, though, can look very different by district, and some of it is process. The, the standard is clear, we have standards of professional practice, but the process, like how much of it is face-to-face versus just receiving it on the, we have a, about a, a feedback system where people will receive it, you know, online, that feels a little less personal, you know, personalized. And sort of the tenor of the conversation, the, the support that comes with it, that can vary, you know, as you can imagine, quite significantly, and I think we have to standardize some of that in order for it to feel more growth-oriented.
So, that, that standard evaluation, is that, that's yearly, I would imagine?
It is.
So, how often do they get formal or informal feedback from school leaders?
I think it varies significantly, and the contract, it depends on how long you've, you know, if you're a newer educator, you get it more frequently. But we don't think that that, we think people should be getting it more frequently than they are, period. And I think it often falls into compliance, which doesn't feel very growth-oriented at all, and people are just getting it done at the end of the year to satisfy what's required, which is not, which is problematic in some cases. So, you know, this is, and, and yes, a survey would be helpful. I also know we've gotten that feedback from teachers themselves. I, my guess is, again, I, the survey would give us more concrete data, is it's more about the formal evaluation process that is coming from administrators than it is from coaches.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not calling.
Sorry, another, another question here. I guess I would be interested in seeing what the faculty are expressing as a need. I would love to see that data, like, straight from, from staff, if that's something that...
Well, the survey data, you mean?
Yes, but I guess more, more in-depth than this. Like, it's clear here that we want to increase positive perception of these evaluations, but I guess I, like, what does that mean to staff and, and faculty? Like, what is more positive in, in their eyes?
Yeah, I mean, could also, we could also host a focus group where you could hear from staff, too. I mean, I, I would encourage people to be open and honest of what they think productive, without calling out individual evaluators, but to say, like, this is what a good process feels like. I think, yeah, we could definitely organize that. I, I think that's, yeah, that would certainly give you more detail, and I think teachers would be very honest about that. Member Manning?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, but just a thought on the, on the feedback. I think it's important how we ask the question, if we devise our own survey for that, because we're using the, the word evaluative, evaluation or evaluative, almost every time anyone is referring to the feedback, and so much of, of the feedback that is important is non-evaluative, you know, and it's so, I'm not sure even how, how I would read this response, you know, and you, and then the, the feedback, the non-evaluative, the collegial feedback can come from the, the coaches or whoever, I forget what the term is now that they're calling them, but also from each other, you know, from partners, from sharing student work, from all of those other things, giving each other feedback. So, there's so many ways to, to receive feedback, and I think we, we should tap into asking about all of them. I had a question, just on the, on the October, when you said for the October, for the four years, so that's, as long as somebody graduates, so would they be, how would, can you give me an example of how that would happen?
Yeah, so, there are students that are currently part of the, the four-year cohort that should have graduated in June. They still did not meet all their graduation requirements, and so they're currently, they have until October 1st to complete all their requirements to be counted as a four-year graduate.
So, requirements like you, someone would have to go to, like, summer school to repeat a course?
It could be summer school, some of them are doing some online work, some of them are finishing work that they haven't turned in yet because they haven't passed all their courses.
Okay, so, so there's a possibility to finish your work from the previous semester as late as October without starting a whole new class, et cetera?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that is, and also for dropouts, like, if you drop out in the year previous, you have until October 1st to re-engage in the school, within the school, and this, and you won't be penalized for a dropout because the child has, student has re-engaged with your school district before October 1st. That will be part of the 23, 24 data, even if they re-engage on September 30th.
That has more of an effect on, like, the school data than on the child, on the student, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they have to take the courses and...
Right.
...re-engage with the class or whatever, but...
That's right.
Okay. My other, my other question are... My other, my other question are really, and I guess it's just another comment, on the lack of the numbers completing the survey at the high school, the student survey, I think the, I think that the low numbers is actually the answer. You know, they're answering by, by such a low number.
I think that's more of an adult, the systems-
I don't know.
The adults, have to give them the opportunity to answer the survey.
Yeah, yep, this is true. But I mean, if they're given the thing and they're not, so I think, you're right, I would give you that part too.
I mean, look, it, the one thing that's tricky is we do give out the survey, the panorama, twice a year, which I have some reservations about, I'll just put it out there because we give it in November, right Ellen? And then we give it at the end of the school year. It's, it's easy, it's more, I think, more informative to compare November to November and end of the year to the end of the year, because there's ebbs and flows in the school year and both how students feel about school and how staff feel about school. So, but we do get, we do have two data points a year. I think it is probably more productive to look at November to November and June to June or May to May when we look at these surveys. I'm happy to provide the committee with any of the survey data by school or by the district. You can, sir, I've shared it with some of you in the past before. So, but you're, to the question that Veronica mentioned is like, yeah, the, it's hard, like you have to follow up in the areas of where you're concerned to really understand it because there's more, the, the survey questions don't give you the depth of understanding to your point. So, oh, sorry.
Member Manning?
Just one more, I guess, and it's from my perspective, if, if an issue is that our concern is that they're not being given the survey to take, or, then what is our follow-up with the adults who, their job is to be administering that survey to the whole high school? I mean, what are we doing and are we just saying, well, it's because the adults didn't do the job and we go on to like the next year? You know, and-
That's, that's my, that's my role to, to-
The word, since we're talking evaluation, I mean, you know, and I'm not saying you wait for that, but with, are we following up with those people?
Oh yeah. I mean, I think that's something we, I also think, you know, at the high school, they have, you know, the seniors leave in May. At the end of May, we lose them if we give the survey too late. There's exams at the end of the year, so-
Why would we give the survey too late? I mean, I don't take any of those as excuses.
No, no. We, that's, that's a managerial issue that we have to make sure we, we get, the data is important to us as part of our strategic plan.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
The last area strengthening the foundation, the central office support, we did a survey for the first time of departments and, and that we asked administrators to complete this, teach, team chairs, assistant principals and principals. And overall, we got a, they, they got, the department's got a favorable response. I think the one department which was brand-new was the DEI work, because I don't think people really understood what the work was. And Laura's role is so new that people had a lot of questions about what exactly that role is. And so that's part of the work is Laura takes on year number two in a brand-new role. But the feedback was generally really positive from the depart, from schools. There was, there, there's still work that we need to do. You know, there's still questions about transportation and special education, which are predictable questions, but overall, the, the data was positive. This adequate staff access to materials and information, that was the first time we had asked the question, meaning do staff feel like they have adequate access to materials and information? I think the, the response was higher than I thought it would be. It was 68% of staff felt like they had the adequate tools and information to do their work. This increase in efficiency through cross-collaboration, I'll be the first to admit, we do not have a good measurement for that. So that's why that's TBD, it's not because we're waiting for data. This is the one place where I don't think we have a good tool to, to measure that, so I, something I have to do because it's in our strategic plan, but we don't have a good way to measure that. And response to work orders, this is a little misleading within two days. People are getting responses within two days. It doesn't mean that it's being responded to and addressed within two days. So I want to, I'm giving ourselves a green, but it's a little misleading. The response is getting better, that if somebody puts in a concern, they're getting a response like, yes, we've received it and we'll take care of it. We have, that's, we're talking about how do we actually measure the length of time that it takes to actually resolve the problem. Some of the problems, we're not going to resolve quickly because they're complicated or they don't fall high on the list of priorities. If it's a safety issue or how, you know, high-risk issue, we do expect it to be addressed quickly. But with the new operations hero software, we're trying to have better data on work orders. I do, we do get good feedback on IT response time and I do want to, what's that, Mark?
Four-hour response time.
Well, so that, this is the four means not four championship rings. It means-
Four, I've got my dashboard on.
Okay. I, we do get very good feedback from, on the IT department in general, since our IT department is also responding to staff issues now, so, but we have work to do around the facilities piece of it and better understanding the new operations hero tool. So those are the, and I'll just include here, here are the refl- my, my reflections on the year, where I see our successes and where I see our top challenges. I'm not going to read these to you, but I do want to, I'm very, we should be very, I think, proud, our staff should be around our successes and work that we have done that has mattered for kids. We do have work around quality and quantity of feedback and coaching, as we've talked about. Staff attendance is a place we want to get better at across the board. I'm not just signaling out teachers, I mean, that's everybody, administrators and, you know, all, at all levels of the organization. I think we do have some flat performance and academic outcomes still in some schools, certain grade levels that we are, will look at and you'll hear more about when we do the MCAS presentation. We, the, we do have the preliminary data, so some places, the district popped and made some impressive gains, other places were stuck. You'll hear more about that. You know, I do think kids need more access to cognitively demanding work. That includes homework, that includes, that, this continues to be an area that I think is of concern to all of us here as we talk about kids being prepared for life after Salem Public Schools, disproportionality in discipline rates, we, we've talked about as a, an area of concern. And then students' stat- and staff's sense of belonging. You know, we're living in a world where people are craving the, the idea of feeling connected to an organization. And since the pandemic, I think more and more people are, you know, that, that's been, been a challenge. And we, as many organizations, have to continue to figure out how we, we ensure that our students and staff feel like they're part of the direction of the school system. So we take that feedback very seriously. And the last thing I'll say is a reflection for the school year is, you know, I do think we work, as a system, people work really hard. One thing that I, I've been thinking a lot about is, my wife gave me this book, Atomic Habits. If you haven't read it, it's a fascinating read about the importance of building systems. And you're only as good as the systems you build. And it's not about just goal, it was sort of revolution, it doesn't sound revolutionary, but to me it was revolutionary. It's not enough just to set goals. And we have set goals and that's motivating and we're excited about setting goals. But everybody sets goals, even losing teams set goals. Every year, the worst team in any sports league sets goals. Doesn't mean that they achieve their goals, right? Because they don't have the systems to do it. And so as a school system, right, I do think that's a place we have work to do. We have some really strong systems in some places and the places we're struggling, like feedback and, you know, observation, feedback, we need to strengthen our systems in that place. So I'll just stop there, take questions before we turn the page to talk about the upcoming school year.
Any further questions from committee members?
I got a quick one.
Yeah.
On the priority four on that chart, you said the central office support was that you asked, like administration?
Yes.
What about the other three? Was that everybody?
I, who did I, who did we ask?
Yeah, on the other three, like the adequate information and the increased-
No, the adequate staff access to materials, information was to teach, all teachers.
To everybody? And the, what about the other two, the same thing? Is it just the first one?
Central office department support, we did not ask teachers and staff. We just-
Did you ask these to staff?
Oh, increase in efficiency through cross-collaboration.
Was that everybody?
We didn't ask anybody that, we don't, we have, that, we don't have a tool to measure that.
Oh, okay. I thought you, all right, I'm sorry.
No, no, the, and the response to work orders within two days, I just, we just pulled that from our-
That's like-
Like just looking at the data that we collect from-
Looking at the broken thing, oh, okay, got it.
And like I said, it's incomplete because it's, all it is is reporting on, do people get a response or not?
Okay.
Which is better than not getting a response, but it doesn't mean that it's fixed.
Yep. We heard you, we're ignoring you, no, just kidding.
All right.
Okay.
No further questions? Back to school.
Yeah, I, I just, before we get to, the one thing I'll, I'll say is all the official data on many of these will come out end of September, beginning of October, when the state lifts the embargo on the accountability data and the MCAS performance data. So we'll, we'll review that all with you at that point.
Could we also get some more de- a detailed breakdown of the disciplinary stuff at each of the different schools?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Ellen, can we connect on that? Yes, we do have all of that, we can get that for you, from the last school, from the last school year, yeah. Yep. Okay, so back to school update, so we're turning the page to the upcoming school year and just talk a little bit about, the nice thing is you're not going to just hear from me, we're gonna do a carousel here of updates from the different departments. Unfortunately, Deputy Superintendent Carbone is seriously injured herself and has a, is laid up on her back, so she's not here tonight, so I will stand in for her. But we have many very capable person, people to talk about their different areas tonight. And so, let's see here, again, I want to just ground us in the, our strategic priorities, which are the same that I just reviewed in our updates, trying to ground us. And then here are a series of our key drivers for this upcoming school year. A lot of this is emanating from the data that I just reviewed. We are really, I'll just quickly go over this because the schools' improvement plans, which we will share with you, their, schools are working on them right now, we're asking them to build out improvement plans around these priorities, which are consistent with our strategic plan. First of all, we want to have a strong feedback in literacy and mathem- or a strong tool to examine literacy and mathematics instruction, really focused on students owning cognitively demanding work and looking at SEI strategies, given the number of MLs that we have in our schools. We really want to strengthen our routines and systems around data-informed instruction. It means not looking at the MCAS, which I would call a post-mortem assessment, because we get the results months after kids take them. It's not helpful, never helpful. What's helpful is the regular assessment that we're looking at and making adjustments in real-time to how kids are performing around state standards. That's a place that we need to continue to grow. In priority two, we want to strengthen educator voice in the development of school-based PD. We've heard staff say that the professional development doesn't meet their needs, so we're now using a consistent tool across schools that will give us feedback on, most of the PD that we offer, professional development, is at the school level. So we want to hear from schools, I mean, staff, about whether that's, meets their needs or not. And so we can collect that data, we can share that with you. We've never done that before, have a consistent way of looking at, because, what, how, how staff feel about what's given at the school level. We, we also heard from staff about the need to schedule opportunities throughout the year for staff to build community and belonging. That can happen as part of structured professional learning, or it could happen outside of professional learning, as staff get together or schedule times and opportunities for them to actually connect around the work. We all know that when you feel connected to the people you work with, it makes it a lot easier to do very challenging work when you have, and it's not the connection to the school, I mean, district, the district necessarily, but it is important that you feel a sense of belonging to the direction of the individual school that you work at. Strengthen the feed, frequency and impact of observation and feedback, that's like fifth time I've said that today. Obviously, that's a priority for us. And then moving down to the, our work around student culture, priority three in our strategic plan is we were, last year, we had a lot of success with establishing a beginning-of-the-year playbook, which is just structures and systems and routines across all the schools. It generally worked very well last year with a couple of exceptions, and some schools really need to carry it out all throughout the year and not fall off on the routines that make for a safe, well-organized, respectful place to go to school. Our work around chronic absenteeism is, is another priority. And then finally, teaching, more, more deliberately teaching social emotional learning and what we have trained people on are restorative practices that Ellen and her team have been working to train staff. And how do you incorporate that? Not as like in a moment when kids are not doing the right thing, but just consistently as part of the regular school day. All right, so I've got teaching and learning and then I'll pass it off to other people. We had a very successful summer leadership institute, yep?
Mayor, Mayor. I just wanted to mention one thing because I'll, I'll forget it.
Sure.
Because you, you noted the school improvement plans and Member Manning and Cruz and I realized when we were going through policies that were out of compliance with our school improvement, the school improvement plans are happening, but we're not taking-
Receiving them.
Yeah, we're not getting them. So I just wanted to make a note of that, that we, we've identified that that's something we have to change.
Yep. They are on the web, the site, but we need to deliver them to the school committee, which we will do, so thank you for pointing that out.
Electronically. I'd like more paper.
Do you want, you want a stack of all of them? Okay. The summer leadership institute, we had at the end of June, which has become an annual part of our routines. I do want to highlight the Salem pre-K partnership, which is new for the upcoming school year, which we just want to, I've never seen a grant for $1 million. And we received the $1 million to expand our pre-K partnership, which is very exciting. It will bring two other community partners into the fold. We have three, but now Pathways for Children, which is at Horst Mann and Angela's, preschool and daycare, which is at Salem High School, will now be part of the consortium. It will allow us to expand City Connects to the pre-K space for the first time, which means we'll have a wraparound person there. It will strengthen our supports, especially around special education services, allowing us to hire special education staff to work with the community partners, because those kids will eventually be coming to us, eventually. It allows us to hire the, to relaunch the children's cabinet through the work of the Children's Alliance that Sarah Roy at the city is now leading. We are going to be doing another needs assessment with the support from the Rennie Center and then we are trying to build out the single point of entry, which I will tell everybody in this, who's in this room, the single thing I hear from my community walks that is, is the most striking is the amount of people in Salem who are looking for pre-K seats and don't know where to go. I, I will say that Laura can attest to that, you know, we ask parents what questions they have at the school. The single biggest question we get is, I have a three, I have four, I have a two-year-old, I have a three-year-old, I have a four-year-old, what are my options? Where do I go? I have, you know, I have the need for transportation, I don't, I have a voucher. That landscape is super convoluted for families. That single point of entry is really important for, for our work moving forward. So I just want to highlight that from the conversations that we've had this summer. We've also, there's a strong focus on college and career programming now at the middle school level, as we back some of the CTE career work, not just CTE, but just career thinking for middle school students. And the pilot, now that it's all eighth grade, will be very much focused on introducing that work at the middle school level, with Chelsea leading that and Mia Riccio from Student Services doing that work. LEAP is also going to be partnering with us through supports from the Department of Education and RE Trust is a, a funding source we leverage for that as well. And then we're going to continue to advance our district practices around our strategic plan. And strategic planning is not just the district level, but it's the schools' individual improvement plans that we're trying to align more and more to the strategic plan. So you'll see consistent language in their priorities that each of the school has and they're setting goals around our district goals that you saw me present on tonight. With that, I'm going to present, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. T., Dr. Talbot, around academics.
Good evening. I'm excited to look forward to four big pillars of our academics work in the 24, 25 school year. The first is around monitoring curriculum. We are so excited to land a K5 science curriculum in our elementary schools called Amplify. We piloted it in the spring. Such joy, such exploration, inquiry, learning, lots of writing, teachers were thrilled, kiddos were thrilled. Pictures are great, so we're excited to continue that this year as well. Also this year, we are back on rotation with curriculum and programming review, so we're going to do, we're going to engage in a K to 12 math program review. For supporting instruction, like Dr. Zright said, we're going to focus on closing the gaps for our multilingual learners. And we are going to double down on writing and academic discourse as a way to raise achievement for all kiddos, but in particular, our multilingual learners. We are excited to celebrate families. We are excited that there is a new 21C program at the Horace Mann School. That was a competitive grant with lots of partners pooling their resources, and we are excited to dream big over at the Horace Mann. We want to continue the practice of centering the English Language Parent Advisory Council leadership voices here at School Committee. They presented before you in the spring. We're looking for them to present to you in the spring and fall, as well as maintain the success of our wildly popular international nights, which happen three times a year. And finally, in support of educators, we're looking to really provide our coaches with some targeted, structured feedback from our end, so they can support teachers in unlocking their students' genius and feeling empowered and competent. And finally, this year we're going to do some more centralized professional development than we have in past years, and we are going to focus on math. We've committed to 20 hours of math professional development starting next week, and we're excited to see our students grow as teachers' excitement and competence grows as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I don't know, maybe you want to wait till questions?
We can do questions while you're up there.
I have a question.
Yep. Yep. Member Cornell?
Sorry. On the support instruction, the focus on writing and academic discourse, I'm just curious, is this like an interdisciplinary approach, or is it owned by ELA instructors, you know, or, or ELA specialists specifically?
Yeah, so writing definitely is across disciplines, for sure, but it is time now in our GLEAM, which is the growing literacy equity across Massachusetts. So we are in our fourth year of our GLEAM partnership, and it's time to really focus on the writing component of literacy. So it's driven from our literacy curriculum, but everybody needs to own a piece of it, and we're really excited for it to land in science as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions?
Okay, so we bring up Ms. Dusset Lee on special education, some exciting newness.
Yes, we have a lot of great things going on this year for special ed. The first pillar for capacity building, we're implementing a lot of new things for our employees and for our educators. The first thing we're doing is we're implementing the new IP. IP hasn't changed in over 20 years, so DESI has implemented a new IP. By the end of next week, we will train over 200 of our special educators and administrators on the new IP process and what it means. We are also partnering with Vector Solutions this year for staff that want to either get a second license or are still working on their initial license. This will be completely free modules for them to get their special ed license. We're also expanding training opportunities for professionals also through Vector Solutions. This will give them more training on things that directly impact their job every day, such as PEX training, which would be picture exchange, working with students with behavior challenges, behavior plans, also working with students with autism. So a lot of tailored professional development for our pairs. In our area of supporting all learners, we've expanded the role of Director of Alternative Placement and Services. We've seen since the pandemic that we have a lot of students that are not able to be at school, either through illness or through hospitalization. This director will help take care of that, take care of those students, and make connections with the providers and with the families. We've hired a bilingual special education administrator over at Bentley to support families and students over there.
Can I just interrupt for one second? Just so people don't think we're hiring more administrators, I just want to be clear.
These are the same, yeah.
So these are people, these are roles that already existed. Their job responsibilities are expanding. For the Director of Alternative Placements, that's been our out-of-district placement person, so their role is expanding. And the bilingual special education administrator is the team chair.
Yes.
Who just happens to have a bilingual background.
Yes.
And we're asking them to use that expertise in a building where we want to make sure that we're, that students are not being over-identified for special education because they are developing a second language. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
When we had open service provider positions, we made sure that we were hiring people who were bilingual, especially to work at Bentley. And we have ongoing partnerships with Blue Engine and Landmark to provide training for inclusion instruction, so that is a continuation of the professional development we started last year. For community and caregiver support, we've expanded our community engagement through caregiver learning opportunities. We are partnering with an organization to provide training for parents that are new to the IP process. We also have a multilingual partnership to support parents new. So that is also through the same organization. So we are doing caregiver.
You, just want to give you credit that you referred the organization to us that are supporting us to make sure parents have, and I can't remember the name of the organization.
Exceptional Lives.
Exceptional Lives, right. Okay.
So they'll be providing parent support during our parent, we have a couple parent fairs planned for this year for special ed, where parents can receive some training either around the IP, around the process, around community resources. And we're also going to include professional development from our own providers within the district to, around speech, speech and language, reading, OT, for parents that want to access that as well.
Questions? Yep. Member Miranda?
Thank you, this is great. One question I have is, in terms of the organization, Exceptional Lives, I think you had stated, is there any type of parent advocacy work that they do, or supporting parents during the IP process, which can be like really, really contentious at times? And just want to make sure that parents have a solid understanding of their rights and that they're protected in that way.
So what they'll do is they're going to do an introduction to IEPs and what their parents' rights are, right, right off the bat, at the beginning of the year. And then after that, they will do, also do professional development with families around resources and places that they can go to get that advocacy as well.
Awesome. And is there any type of connection that has been made with CPAC in regards to this?
So we are offering three to four parent fairs this year, within conjunction with CPAC. So CPAC will have a meeting there, while we're also doing some of these other activities as well. So we are going to do a new IP information session for families in Spanish, and Portuguese, and English. And then they are also going to run a meeting. So there'll be lots of activities that families can join. They can also meet a lot of our service providers during this fair, and we will also provide these other opportunities for them as well.
That's awesome, thank you. And then just one last thing. Dr. Zright, I think you had mentioned that we want to be sure not to, I'm not remember the terminology that you use, but.
Overrepresentation of.
Yes. I guess the, the counter to that would be that we don't want certain kids to slip through the cracks, because we're trying to not.
Right, fair enough.
Yeah, just wanted to name that, but thank you so much for all of this and your work.
Last year, we implemented a system where we're tracking students to make sure that we're not over-identifying them. We do on a regular basis look at that, to make sure that we're either not under-identifying or over-identifying.
Member Manning? Do you have a question?
If we could just go back to the first bullet?
Sure.
And when you, you're training over 200 educators and administrators, do you mean special ed administrators, or do you mean the building administrators?
Both.
Who need to know what.
Yep. Yep, so the special ed administrators are receiving an all-day professional development on this, and they've also gone to some of the DESI trainings as well on the new IP, but we will also be training the building administrators as well of what the new IP entails and what the new requirements are.
Okay, so the principals wouldn't go to the DESI trainings anymore or anything?
No. So we will do a training with them through the principal's cabinet.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Students Support Services, Ellen Wingard.
Hi there. I will keep it short, because Dr. Zright already mentioned a couple of different points. So again, we are so excited to expand City Connects into our pre-K partner programs. It's a really innovative and I think game-changing approach that is cutting-edge, and I'm excited to hire actually, with the support of United Way and the Lubin Foundation, two City Connects coordinators who will complete that team. So we're in that process right now. We're also partnering with our middle and high schools to really expand what comprehensive, coordinated counseling, college and career counseling looks like in our schools. And so Mia Riccio will be leading that this year alongside our middle and high school leaders. We, again, this year will be leaning into restorative practices and SEL, social-emotional learning, as a way to disrupt disproportionality, and so we'll talk about that at a subsequent meeting. And to Dr. Zright's point, we're going to continue to ride the momentum of decreasing absenteeism with the elimination of the attendance and outreach specialist, and with the expanded work around City Connects and college and career prep. We needed to really rethink our department leadership. So as the executive director, I worked with our SAA and district leaders to think about how do we restructure to better serve our students and schools and, you know, more efficiently? And so we transitioned to the model that the academics department has currently. So we'll have a six through 12 Director of Student Support, and Mia Riccio will fulfill that role. And we are in the process of closing our final hiring on the pre-K to five Director of Student Support. And those folks will oversee all of our counseling and wraparound programming, our attendance, our SEL, all of the support services in place there. And so that's exciting for us to be even more aligned, so that we can be more streamlined for our schools. And finally, we took the year last year to look at our behavior specialist role and tease apart how we can fit that into restorative practices and the work that we're doing around data-informed decision-making and practices, and have launched the Student Success Advisor, which will have a proactive role to be looking at students who we know the data says need more attention. So we're launching that this fall, and then we've talked last year about relaunching the SNAP health platform, so that we can better case manage our kiddos and their access to community-based physical health supports, but also in-school data to be able to respond more rapidly for students' success.
And Ellen, correct me if I'm wrong, but that means that we're not using Aspen for health, the health platform? And so when the back-to-school forms go out this year, it'll be slightly different, because the nurses have, Aspen has been clunky for them in order for them to track, you know, some of the, the individual cases and to be able to be more responsive. So this feedback came from the nurses who wanted to go back to the SNAP platform, or to utilize a different platform than Aspen that just wasn't working for what their needs are. I don't know if the fight.
It syncs with the, with the different state-level data much easier.
And again, I want to point out that we're not hiring another administrator here, but we, this is a department that lost, in the budget cuts, the attendance person, so it's a redistribution of responsibilities. And Mia is in one of the roles. Eliza Casella was in one, but she was now, she's now the Assistant Principal here at Collins, so we're backfilling that position. Thank you, Ellen.
Any questions from the committee? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Technology?
Hi. All right, so I am reporting out on the three teams that are in part of the Instruction and Technology Department in Salem. One of them is technical support, and most of that was around procuring new hardware, which is what we did over the summer. This is updating our Chromebooks for the fourth, fourth graders, fifth graders, and ninth graders as part of our regular replacement cycle in our technology plan. We have updated our classroom presentation displays from the standard projector on the wall with the bulb to interactive TVs. We've already done that at the high school in Collins previously. We have completed these, this upgraded Horace Mann, and we have Bates and Witchcraft. We've ordered those displays, but due to some procurement-related issues, they will not be installed until December. The Chromebooks did get ordered a little late as well, so we're hoping, fingers crossed, those are going to be here last week, either next week or the week after for students. We also ended our lease with our copy machines, and we replaced all of the multi-function copiers in the district, or most of them.
Can I just jump in on the Chromebooks? So, you know, unlike other districts where parents have to buy the Chromebooks, we provide them to all kids, and especially the high school, we, they are backordered, so we're waiting on fourth, fifth, and ninth. They may not be here till the second week of school, which is not ideal, but it's, but the first week of school is a lot of like getting to know people and routines, but they will, we, we pretty, we're fairly confident that they will, hopefully they'll be here for the start of school, but if not, they'll be here for the second week of school. So not, people shouldn't be freaking out, they're coming, and all ninth graders will have Chromebooks, brand new, as they start their high school journey.
And we do have some backup plan, if we do have to, if we get into some situations, we have some, some contingency plans we can work through that I'd rather not, but we can if we need to, so. Data and applications, so we have, one of the things that we've been asked about quite a bit is the ability, unfortunately, the state really requires student and staff names to be their legal name, but as we know, that, you know, with centering belonging, like not all students and staff members feel like they're, what's their legal name is the name that they necessarily want to be known as. So we've kind of taken a roundabout way to get around that, to be able to update our systems, so that students and staff members can have their preferred name in our systems, but still send their legal name to the state as part of the requirement. So that was kind of a little, it was a little hurdle to jump through, but it was a pretty important one that we wanted to get done. We have new data integrations for some platforms. We mentioned the Snap, Health Snap platform that we're setting up syncs between Aspen and SNAP, as well as our new transportation system, which we launched last year, but we're expanding to all-new types of modules in that system. We also have launched the Student Companion Tool, which is something that we can get data directly into our dashboard to track interventions. We started in the spring with reading interventions, so we can get some data on what students are in interventions, what the interventions are doing, if they're helping, how long they are. We're going to try to expand that this year to more intervention opportunities, including potentially social-emotional. In digital learning, that was our big, our big lift this year was to kind of reorganize our digital learning department. We reorganized, eliminated some jobs, shifted some jobs, and were able to pull this together. We hired a Director of Digital Learning and Library Services, who is overseeing this new, this new team. We also brought in two new library and digital learning specialists at Bates and Horace Mann, as well as transition the existing librarians at Bentley and Collins into library and digital learning specialists. We also created priority standards and scope and sequence and curriculum that we're launching this fall as part of the regular specialist rotation for all students in K, grades K through eight, that will get technology and library every week. Once again, these are not, none of, these were all budget-neutral positions, they were based on eliminations and shifts in different departments to get this done.
Any questions? Member Manning?
I don't have a question, but a comment. Mark, I just want to thank you and your department for caring enough about the preferred name issue and then figuring out a way to do it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I think Jill's with us online, if I'm not mistaken, about human resources. Is she there?
She is there. She.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Jill, I can hear you.
Okay, can the people in the room hear me?
I don't think so, I was having an audio issue, so.
We're getting you on the laptop, we're getting you on a laptop right now, hold on, stand by.
Okay, I apologize.
If I can hear you.
I mean, I can also do this update, Mark. Yeah, why don't, you want, you want us to move on to a different? You want us to move on to a different one? Okay. So I'm going to, Laura, aside, you want to come up to, to look at diversity, equity, inclusion, and engagement, which also overlooks that enrollment, overseas enrollment in the PIC. So, Laura?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. I just want to share some important updates. For us, we're really trying to focus on three out of the four priorities. As you know, we are more adult-centered when it comes to this department, although anything that we do does benefit the well-being of all of our young people within the district. So with priority two, we're excited to be able to share that all of our family engagement facilitators will be doing things from our last follow-up with home visits, any type of family engagement-related training that will be done by them, to a lot of our educators, to all of our educators within the school, so they will be having some time to do that. And. And any kind of new initiatives, whether that is either through hiring initiatives or other opportunities to engage in any of the new projects that are within the department, we have started through teams like the Equity Advisory Council that we started last year, the same with parent advisory councils that have been going on now for several years, thinking about how educators can also contribute to those conversations. And then, of course, we already talked about different opportunities where I have already identified where cross-collaboration can happen between parent information, transportation, how that trickles over to the rest of the district and what it means for enrollment within our schools. For Priority Three, when it comes to centering belonging, we are creating and launching this year a tool for students, educators, and also, I didn't include that, families to be able to report any concerns that they may have. So, this is not a survey, but more so just sort of a reporting tool, so that we can keep track, and also to be able to share survey data. So, for the family survey that Dr. Reich was mentioning, we are going to close it at the end of the month, just so that we can get more parent participation during the back-to-school fair. We have a plan in place for that, so that we are looking at both what is being reported throughout the school year, but then also just an overall feedback of the parent experience through that panoramic parent survey. And then, to be able to grow other spaces, for example, like the affinity group, we will expand the opportunity to do that, and then really work with educators to invest in them and grow them, whether that means get them connected to educational opportunities so that they can be elevated within their role and really grow our own within the district. And if higher education is a barrier, then really working with some higher education partners to get them connected to that and then moving forward. So, that's where you get the identify, engage, and invest in educators. Lastly, and Priority Four, strengthening our foundation, is really thinking about the different systems that need to be created when it comes to largely with our enrollment. Again, which ties into Priority Two with that cross-collaboration piece that I mentioned, thinking about how our current systems are talking to each other, whether it's Aspen, whether it's Open Architects and other systems that we have, how are they all talking to each other so that no data point, no families, no students, you know, I heard the term "fall through the cracks," we don't want that to continue to happen. Same with supporting schools with more efficient communication and thinking about the ways that we have done it historically and what's the better, efficient, and more accurate way to do that. The last thing I would say is that we have, and I mentioned this in a prior report to the committee, we are currently undergoing an equity policy audit, and we should have some more information after the end of September, so I can provide a follow-up to the committee after that.
Mark, it's not clicking over. Can you do it from there? Okay. No, no.
Are we back on track?
Nope.
Hold on.
One more, one more. Just wanted to share just a brief update on enrollment. So, a couple of things is that the difference between the numbers for last year and this year, some of our dates are a little bit different. One, because we're starting school a little bit later this year. Our rollover happened a lot earlier this year than it did last year, and some of the data that we were able to collect within specific time frames did not align. So, our October data from '23 to '22 looked a little bit different, and I know that I had previously reported data in a, in a past meeting, but we are trending in, it's very similar to last year when it comes to enrollment numbers up until this time and leading up to the start of school. So, we're not concerned about any, any gaps, and we still have students that are still enrolling, that are still pending, and we will continue to have student enrollment throughout the school year and through October 1st.
Just on the enrollment, it's important to note, like, we're not going to get a good read on enrollment till the middle of September, because we have people coming in and out, you know, from now until then. I do think with the start of school a little later, hopefully, we'll, it'll be cleaner, because sometimes families don't come after Labor Day, that can happen. And, but we do think this data is cleaner. I wouldn't read anything into this quite yet, but it is going to be really important that our October 1 numbers are hopefully higher than they were the year before. I am, I am a little concerned, because we lost a lot of families out of the Bates complex, the migrant families, there were 80 students that were there, and while many of them are still enrolled, many of them also relocated to other communities. This is something we need to watch carefully. I do expect Salem High's numbers to be a lot higher than 920, there's still students in pre-reg, you know, that are registering, and so, I expect that to be higher. And I, you know, we'll just please everybody do the rain dance for the numbers to continue to go up, because that obviously has an impact on our, our funding. I will just say that we are really full in first grade. We shifted a teacher from kindergarten to first, where we had a lot more openings in kindergarten, space in kindergarten, without going over what we said as our caps, our caps as a district in enrollment, and, and first grade is the grade that we're most concerned about, but we should have now ample space to enroll kids. As you know, in Salem, our enrollment numbers unfortunately peak in the spring, I wish they peaked in October or in September, but they peak in the spring, so we always have to watch that moving forward. So, I'll come back to you in mid-September with a much better sense of where we stand with enrollment. I know there were questions here, I think.
Member Corral?
Yes, thank you, Laura. I just want to, before I ask a question, say that I'm always so proud that we have you and this department, and it reflects our values as a district, so thank you for all the work you do. The question that I have is under Priority Three, which is creating a reporting tool for students and educators to share and report concerns. Can you just explain that a little bit?
Sure. So, what we've done, we've looked at what other districts are doing when it comes to things like derogatory, race-based language, any kind of racially-based or discriminatory incidents that are happening in school, on school grounds, et cetera. So, we wanted to have a tool in place that we've been actually looking to, to establish and roll out now for a little while, but this year, we'll start rolling it out to all of the schools to have a place where we can collect this information of what is happening. And those who will have access to it, of course, are all of our educators, regardless of their role within the district, students and their families should be able to have access to these, to this tool, so that we can collect it.
I just have one follow-up question. So, just as a district, have we engaged with, with legal counsel about how, and what is the, what are the safeguards that we've got on here to protect families and educators and kids?
Yeah, so, we, we are, we are going to be engaged, we, we have started to engage with our legal counsel, we're not going to put it out until they have fully vetted it. The city has a tool that they've used, that they've vetted, we've modeled some of it after the city tool. The difference is, we actually can do something about it, because, you know, it's, well, no, you don't have the, I don't mean that as a slight to the city.
Right here.
We have a little bit more leeway in how we respond to these incidents. I, I, yeah, we do have to make sure that we cross all our Ts and dot our Is, but we will be rolling this out, you know, slowly this fall. I do think it's important, we have been talking about it, have not put it into action, our kids, our staff, and our families do need a mechanism. We, you know, Laura, Jill will, you know, have a significant role in vetting the complaints that come in. Right now, they come in through different avenues, I think it's important, it's, it's important that symbolically also to have people know that they can report things and that we'll do something about them as a school system, so. But you're right, we're not, we're not quite there yet without making sure that our attorneys vet them.
And just when, you know, when that process is sort of complete and you feel like you have a direction that you're going to go in, I think it would be great if you came back to us, so that we could ask some questions about how, because I'm mostly concerned about privacy and retaliation and, you know, and I think how, how staff are going to feel supported, you know, and all of that stuff. So, I think there's a lot of questions that, that I'm going to have, once we decide what the mechanism is.
Sure.
Any other further questions for Laura?
Mark, are we ready for Human Resources?
Thank you.
Mark, this thing has, no longer operates here.
I got it.
Okay, so I'll call on you.
The IT department's so good.
Yeah.
Are we back, back on track?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, great, you can hear me, wonderful, thank you. I'm Jill Conrad, the Director of Human Resources. Some quick highlights in our department, we're excited this, very soon, to be launching a new online training for what's our required annual trainings for all staff, and we hope that this new system is something that will be more engaging and help save time. These are annual trainings that everyone has to do every year, really important, but this will help us do it much, much more quickly. Another highlight this year was our Talent Finder Fellows. As you may recall, we eliminated the recruitment manager position, and we shifted instead to this model, which was engaging some of our existing teachers to work part-time, supporting our recruitment efforts throughout the year, paying them a stipend, and I venture to say that it was a great success, because we actually had teacher voices talking to prospective teachers, and I think it went fairly well, so we hope to continue that. A quick overview, we have hired over 100 new hires to the district this year, not all of them teachers, about 45 are new teachers, and as Dr. Reich mentioned earlier, looking at about 18% in terms of how, the percentage of new hires who are racially and ethnically diverse, and in addition, we've also had a number of internal staff transfers. That's everything from just switching a grade level to actually changing schools to a whole different position, et cetera. We are continuing that one-stop-shop onboarding process that we mentioned last year, that's an online onboarding process that has made that whole process much more efficient and collaborative across multiple departments. And we also have deepened the partnerships that we have to support our educators who are coming in, not yet fully licensed, so we hope to definitely work on that a lot more this year and get people really on track to a long-term licensure plan. We're looking to always improve our data processes and ability to report and be more strategic, you know, be able to become more strategic by using data in the department and in the whole area of, of human resources and human capital. So, where are we right now with vacancies? You know, we're in pretty good shape, we're in better shape this year at this point than we were last year, I would, I would say significantly better. We do still have a few classroom and special education teacher vacancies, however, I can tell you that there are really good prospects, maybe close to being hired for several of those, so I think, I'm hoping that by the time we get to August 27th and certainly by September 4th, they will be filled. And then, for paraprofessionals, this is pretty average, normal, to have this level of vacancies at this point. Again, also, prospects are in the, in the pipeline to fill those as well, and then you can see the others. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jill. Any questions from the committee?
Just on the openings, we will, you know, we'll move after this week, if we don't have people in the roles, we'll start shifting into developing backup plans for how these positions will be covered, and schools are already thinking about contingency plans, using other staff who may be our coaches that have to flip back into teaching positions, things like that. So, but, you know, we're actively, you know, looking to fill, this is pretty, I venture to say, pretty good compared to where, you know, the state is right now, and it's nice that we aren't going to, see, we don't have the level of turnover that we had, we've had the last two years, which is really important. I would also point out, for the first time since I've been in Salem, every principal's coming back, and every department head is coming back. It does make it a lot easier to start a school year, when you don't have to train people leading schools or departments, and so, hopefully, that will make for a much more stable start to the school year for everyone.
We have a question from Member Cruz, who is remote.
Thank you, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you, Jill, for that presentation, super helpful to kind of just see where things are from an HR perspective. My question is around, you talked a lot about the, the onboarding process and some of the improvements we've made there. I think just going back to some of the work that we did previously in the district, I know we had a report from TNTP around retention and some of these other pieces, I think one of the things as a committee that maybe Member Manning is, the only other person here that was here when we were trying to figure this out, is around the offboarding processes and getting folks to fill out those exit surveys. Have we seen any, any uptick in the number or percentage of folks that are taking those offboarding surveys and providing feedback to the district, kind of at, at each of the different kind of staffing levels within the district?
You know, I'm not sure I can answer that question accurately, I'd have to, I'd have to really look at those numbers, I haven't looked at those for a little while, as we've been so busy just focused on hiring, but I think that's a great question, and I can get back at you. I think I'm going to be giving a more comprehensive staffing overview at some point coming up to the school committee, so I could bring that information then.
That's perfect, yeah, I think we're due for our, our regular kind of personnel report, so that, that, that checks out perfectly, and thanks, Jill, appreciate any follow-up you can give on the exit surveys.
Any further questions? No, from the manning.
Yeah, not, not a question, just a comment, I, I can't tell you how thrilled I am that all of the administration is coming back to everything, to, I assume, pretty much the same positions, maybe some movement, but that's, I think, for the sake of the system and the staff, that's like huge, absolutely huge, and I think it's a credit to Central Office that folks are coming back also.
We're excited, we're excited not to have to break anybody new in. We had five new principals last year, which they did, I have to say, they did a remarkable job, but it's, there's a learning curve, so.
Well, yeah, still, but that's okay, you can handle that.
All right, Transportation.
And Vanessa's not here, so I will share a quick update. First, we had a very large increase in applicants, so last year at this time, we had 1,379 applicants, and this year, we've had 1,576 applicants. So, we have some full buses already, but we are excited that the routes have been created and tested. So, we, our drivers are busy doing dry runs, they are making adjustments to the routes, we are adding any recently-enrolled students or kindergarten students, so we feel like we are on track, I would say, maybe not ahead. NRT is doing our fixed routes and our special ed routes, and the families will be notified this week about what their child's bus route is. We also, oops.
Can I just jump in there? I just want to point out how noteworthy it is that parents are going to know this week. There have been times that, in my last four years, parents were finding out two days before school started, and that we did not do any dry, we were not able to do dry runs before the school year started. So, that is a credit to Vanessa and her team, I just want to shout that out, that is remarkable, given how many, how, you know, we're, we also have people registering, you know, by the day. It is, it is remark, I, I don't, people do not understand how complicated it is to run transportation, and we're fortunate, please send her a note of encouragement for the work that she has done, because it has, I have considerably more hair than I would have expect, if we had been on the same path from a few years ago. I know people are scoffing at that, but Vanessa deserves a tremendous amount of credit, I just want to point that out.
No, no, okay.
Not going to make fun of you.
No jokes, no jokes.
No, but I also, I hope Vanessa's watching, or you can tell her, Elizabeth, that I hear a lot of very positive feedback about her specifically from families, when they're trying to get a problem solved, or they're reaching out to the office, so she is held in very high regard, so I feel like it's not an easy job, not that anybody over there has an easy job, but her job can be...
but her job can be particularly nuts. So I just wanted to mention that.
I hope Vanessa's out having fun. You know, she did all this work. Why should she be watching us?
I will relay your, your kind words to her. I will say that bringing the routing in-house last year has been a game changer. It has been a lot, a lot, a lot of work for Vanessa. But I think the routes are strong, the routes make sense, and this year we were able to get them done earlier. But just the last transportation updates from Vanessa. We are this year doing some things that I think families have been asking for and wanting for. And so we're delighted to roll out WayFinder and StopFinder. So WayFinder, we have installed tablets on all of the big buses. And so kids will swipe on when they get on, so we'll have better information about both the timing of the bus, who is on the bus, where they were picked up, where they were dropped off. It will also, from a Central Office perspective, help us really understand what daily ridership looks like and how full the buses are. We do often, actually, that's not true, last year we didn't end up with a waitlist, but we can end up with waitlists. And so knowing if there are open seats on the buses is really important to us, and it's really important to families to understand the timing of their bus. Which brings me to StopFinder. This is a GPS bus tracking app that allows families to follow their student's bus and be notified about when it arrives, when it leaves the school, when it's approaching the bus stop. We did pilot that previously, and we rolled it out, we will roll it out this year to all families. We had talked about this previously, another version of this app, which was called Where's My Kid? But we, A, don't love that, and B, went with a different platform that aligned with our routing software. So both of those will be in full operation, and we're very excited and grateful. We couldn't have done any of that without the help of IT. And in fact, Vanessa was just singing the praises of the IT department today. We are going to continue the practice we started last year, which is our two in-house bus drivers. We'll cover extracurriculars, trips, and student experiences. This solved a major pain point in a lot of ways for when a kid has to get from New Liberty to the high school or when the golf team needs to leave early for a meet. It expanded the number of field trips schools were able to take and just made it easier and more affordable to do so. So we've gotten a lot of good feedback about our bus drivers covering the extracurriculars. And last, we do have, and we'll talk more about this at a different part of the meeting, we are interested in adding multi-function vehicles to our fleet. And so we do have multi-function vehicles that are currently available. Schools and departments can request one of three to use for their extracurricular and transportation needs. So the update here is that all three of our mini-buses have been converted and registered as multi-function vehicles. So there will be no more need for a 7D driver's license, which means more staff will be eligible to reserve these vehicles. Yeah. Any questions about transportation? Okay, Food and Nutrition Services. So as part of our commitment to serving local fresh food, we have added a new local produce vendor, The Produce Connection. This is in addition to the local vendors we currently use, which are Our Own Gardens, New Entry, One Mighty Mill, North Coast Seafoods, Red's Best, and Walden Local Meats. The Produce Connection is a vendor out of Wakefield and has been servicing 400 different school venues for over 20 years. So we're excited to have yet another local provider in our, in our portfolio. At the end, well, in the second half of last year, we launched a dinner program at Salem High School. This is open to all students enrolled in after-school programming at the high school. And I would say we have steadily, we, last year we saw steadily increasing participation in that. So we are committed, again, to having this program, which we think will serve both the students participating in athletics as well as, as well as kids in any other program or kids who are just staying after school. So we are, we are excited to continue that. Last year, we piloted, we piloted composting, a composting program at Carlton. It started with composting just in the kitchen. We rolled it out to students then composting their waste. And this year, we'll be rolling that out to all schools in the district, so they'll be composting in all cafeterias. We are very committed to student voice in our Food and Nutrition Services, believing that this is a place where we can help to really reinforce a sense of belonging for our students. So at the very end of the year, thanks to the suggestion from students at Witchcraft, we started a program where students can submit a recipe from home that reflects their family or cultural traditions. And then we'll select one and we'll taste test it, and they'll get to teach the kitchen staff how to make it. We also plan to do Harvest of the Month once again, and we'll be doing monthly taste testing. This is part education, part food and nutrition, having students just try a different harvest item each month. And last, we are committed to the ongoing training for staff. And I should mention, Jill reminded me that, that our Food and Nutrition Services Department is fully staffed for the first time in a long time going into the school year. So Michaela Short, our Assistant Director, did begin recruiting very early. So we're excited to have the team in place and to roll out some training as the new year begins and then as we get deeper into the year to continue to provide professional development. So that is Food and Nutrition Services.
Is the training mandatory?
Some of it is, and some of it is not.
Is that dependent on the job or the training?
Both.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Facilities. It has been a very busy summer, and we are nearing completion of some very large projects that this group has stewarded, led, and paid close attention to for a long time, including the replacement of the Bates boilers and controls, the controls at Witchcraft, and also the Witchcraft playground. So expecting to complete those in the days and, in the case of Witchcraft, weeks ahead. We are starting our back-to-school walkthroughs this week to make sure the buildings are ready. So we do go through and look at everything that could possibly make the buildings look anything less than shiny and ready for students. And of course, school committee members have been invited, and I believe Member Miranda will be joining us tomorrow for some of those walkthroughs, but please do come. We do these walkthroughs for back-to-school to look at what our custodians and our custodial staff have been doing at all hours of every day all summer long. But we do monthly walkthroughs with principals, with the custodial team. Zee, Lisa, Golda, whom you'll have from in a minute, and Pat Hagan do walkthroughs with principals so that we can be reinforcing the partnership with schools, but also so that we can catch things early. We do have Operations Hero, which we fully implemented last year, and you probably have seen QR codes around the building. All staff can just scan the QR code and report something. It is not automated that someone responds within 48 hours. It is an actual person, just so that the staff member knows, like, hey, we've heard you, and we will attend to this. So we are excited to continue the implementation of Operations Hero and the monthly walkthroughs and look forward to the back-to-school walkthroughs starting tomorrow. And now Lisa is going to take over and give an MSBA update and then a safety update.
Before we get to that, any questions from the committee, Member Manning?
What about the Bentley controls?
Those are not on. They're, they're not operational and they are not on, we don't have them scheduled to be repaired or replaced, partly because they're so ancient that they are.
No solution to that.
There has not yet been a solution to that.
Thank you for, you have your, I had so many different areas of projects here, but appreciate it.
All right, so for an MSBA update, which I believe the committee had recently in July, correct? So I don't want to repeat too much, but compared to where we were last year at this time, we now have an owner's project manager, which I'm sure you heard about, Answer Advisory. They came on a fully executed contract in June, and they've been at our last school building committee meetings, June 20th last week, August 15th, and our next meeting is September 19th. So in the meantime, as they've been hired, now they help us with the selection of the designer. So we've already established a designer selection subcommittee. The ad was actually placed in the central register by July 31st. We had a site visit two weeks ago. I believe 11 firms came for the site visit, and the applications are due to the district August 28th. So what will happen going forward in September? The subcommittee will be reviewing the applications on September 5th. We already have that meeting planned. And then we have to get those applications to the MSBA the same day, September 5th. And then on the 24th, that's the next panel date that we could make. And we, it's a little bit different than the owner's project manager. We don't make all of the decisions. It goes to the MSBA. There'll be three representatives from the district, more than likely Dr. Reich, Mayor Pangalo, and probably Beth Ann Cornell. So there's only three people that show up. And then what happens there is it's down to a short list of three to four firms. And then those firms will come back in October. Interviews will be conducted. And hopefully by the end of October, we will have a designer onboard so that we can keep moving on. Next step would be the feasibility study, and what are we going to build? Any questions on MSBA? Nope, okay. Safety and security. This, about two weeks ago, we had the Safety Summit. We did something different in terms of, we finally practiced as a district. It was a tabletop exercise. We had participants. We had approximately 90 people from the district. The police officers were there, including the SROs, well represented. We had after-school partners there, all after-school partners were there, family support staff, some teachers, assistant principals, principals, everyone. So we were really able to dig in, and we did a scenario, it took like three hours in the morning, of just walking through, like, well, if this was happening, what would happen next? And so there were like four injects throughout the tabletop exercise, and we were really able, as everybody was really engaged and participating, and asking really good questions and also realizing that there are some things in the district we still don't have or we still need to work on. And so what came out of that was 18 recommendations. The first time Dave Corbin did this, I think, what was it, like 100? So 18 wasn't bad for this. This is good. These are things we'll be working on. And then, as Elizabeth already mentioned, those monthly walkthroughs with the principals for facilities. From my lens, that will be a safety walkthrough. So I'll be going through the building and checking on all of the things that are related to safety and obviously setting up all of our drills. In September, every school will have a fire drill within the first three days, and they will also have an evacuation drill in September. And I think that's it. You're welcome.
Any, any questions from members on safety?
Questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Now you may run.
The last slide for me is just an update from the business office. We are once again developing tools for schools and department heads to manage their budgets. So this year, everyone will have a common tool that will show them what they're starting with, and then there'll be a way for them to track as they spend what their remaining balance is. It will also allow us to keep an eye on purchase orders that should be closed, which I know will be good news to our friends at City Hall. And this year, it will include information on stipends. So one of the pain points we've heard from schools and budget managers is really tracking the amount of stipends that they have and also what they are for. So we have added that to our budget tools. And then just a note, we do have some big changes in the business office. Linda Richard has been the benefits coordinator for the Salem Public Schools for 23 years, and she is retiring as of August 31st. So we are very grateful to Linda for all that she has done all this time for the Salem Public Schools. And she is furiously training our new benefits coordinator to, to take the mantle of making sure that our benefits-eligible employees are accessing, smoothly accessing the benefits that they are entitled to. Linda will be doing some training even after her retirement date, but it is a seismic shift for us. So downstairs in the business office, we have a new benefits coordinator taking over for Linda. That person came from within the office, so we're shifting seats for a number of staff. But we also have a new person in the payroll coordinator seat, because our payroll coordinator left and went to Newberry. And so we have just appointed that person and then replaced her. She was our payroll assistant. So lots of changes, but I think a strong team.
Great. And just the final slide is the back-to-school bash, which is, I think, is growing by leaps and bounds in year three. It's going to be quite a, it's going to be quite a party, from what I can tell. And I do want to thank the SDU for their collaboration, the Salem Police, the City of Salem have been great partners. And this is, yeah, the, there's a lot of buzz out there, and Laura's got her hands full. I'm surprised that she's still.
Laura looks a little nervous.
Yeah, she looks a little nervous, but I think she's, she's got it under control. It'll be at Salt and Salt this year, which I think will give us a better layout. It's going to be a good time. Yeah, extended, it's a lot, Laura, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, so it's longer than it's been in the past. So with that, that's our extensive back-to-school update.
Any further questions on anything that wasn't covered? Not. So the next item we have on here is the finance. So you'll notice that the agenda has been reformatted slightly from the past. So we have a Finance and Operations Report under the Superintendent's Report now, and we have some unused buses to get rid of.
Yes, thank you. There was a memo in the materials requesting your permission to designate eight buses as surplus. Once they are designated as surplus, then we can dispose of them. And we are hoping to auction them and then use the funds to purchase smaller, more energy-efficient vehicles. So in my update, when I talked about the, the mini-buses that are available for staff to use, we need more of those. And so our hope is to dispose of these eight buses that have been sitting in the bus yards since 2021. When we partnered with NRT, they took over our, the, all of our bus routes, and so many of these have just been sitting. We do own 17 buses, and so the other buses are two 77-passenger buses that our in-house drivers use, two wheelchair vans that are used when students who have mobility issues are going on field trips, two small buses in case there, you know, is a smaller group of kids that need transporting, and three of those multipurpose vehicles. So we'll still have those in our fleet. It's just these eight buses that we are asking for permission to get rid of.
Any questions? Yep, Member Miranda.
Thank you. How old are these buses?
Oh, that is a good question. They are from between 2012 and 2016. I don't have the ages of the individual buses, but I could get that to you if you want that.
Okay, yeah, I guess I'm just curious and maybe a little cautious. I'm wondering how auctioning off these buses kind of locks us into continuing to outsource the transportation piece? And I, I don't know if, if the body would like to have further conversation about that or if that's something that you're looking to do today, but yeah.
I would leave it to the school committee for that discussion. I would just note that these buses, we don't know what we will get for them at auction. I think if Vanessa were sitting here, even if we ran all of our own routes and did all of our busing in-house, these buses would need to go because of their age and their condition.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. That concludes your report?
Yes, it does.
All right, thank you. Student Representatives Report, non-subcommittee reports. Any sub, yep.
I would move to accept policies 2202 and 2500 for second reads.
So moved.
All second?
So moved, under discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of second reading of the two policies. We have to do a roll call vote, because Member Cruz is now a remote. Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the matter carries. Any further subcommittee updates? All right. Seeing none. And there had been a request for update on the high school building committee, but I think we just received one, and, but going forward, we'll make it, we'll make it, yeah, we'll make it part of the agenda.
Actually, to have that as sort of a rolling.
Part of the agenda, or as, yeah, okay. All right, we can add it to the agenda. Motions and resolutions. We have a motion to declare the unused school buses presented by the business department as surplus.
So moved.
Your second.
I guess I'm wondering if we can change that motion, or amend the motion to include with, with data from the transportation department on us needing to get rid of the buses, depending on age. I fully trust Elizabeth Polly, obviously, but I think that would be helpful.
We accept the motion to, there's a motion to surplus these buses, and then request additional data from the transportation department on the age of the vehicles and the condition of the vehicles?
Yep. All right. So we need to, so moved.
As amended, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Under discussion. Seeing no further discussion. Member Cruz, uh, Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the matter carries. The next item on the agenda is school committee announcements. Item 10.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Under discussion, there is no discussion. Roll call vote, Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
And Member Hoffman?
Yes.
And myself, yes, we are adjourned.